Okay, good evening. I will call the meeting to order for tonight's city council meeting, May 2nd at 5:15. Filling in for Mayor Jay, who has a conflict tonight. So we have just one slight adjustment on the agenda for tonight. 3A, the Make My Move presentation will be moved down to under number five, under other reports. So otherwise, Jane, can we do roll call, please? Rudolph?
Here.
Shaven?
Here.
Kroger?
Here.
Beelenberg?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Lindberg?
Here.
And we already talked about the agenda amendment. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Shaven. Roll call Rudolph. Rudolph?
Oh, I changed the speakers here.
Lip reading, she said.
Hang on a second.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay, aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you. And please state any conflict of interest if that arises tonight. Consent agenda includes minutes of the April 18th, 2023 council meeting, claims list number 1289 in the amount of $194,326.93. Renewal application for Vismart Inc. doing business as Mikasa for Class C retail alcohol license, and a renewal application for Landon Xavier Trent LLC doing business as Bucksnort for a Class C retail alcohol license. Anybody have any questions or comments to that? Seeing none, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
All motion.
Second? Motion by Beelenberg and second by Rudolph. Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so Ms. Amanda Brewer, quarterly library update for us.
Good evening.
Good evening. So I have a slideshow for you to follow along, but so we just celebrated National Library Week, and just a big thank you to those of you who were able to make it out to our open house on Tuesday. We had a nice crowd for that. In regards to circulation, in March, we actually saw one of our highest, the highest circulation yet for the fiscal year, which is odd for March because usually we see that like in July and August. So we're super excited going into summer, knowing that we're already hitting some pretty high circulation numbers. Our digital circulation has grown from 10% to 20% now, where we're at, so we're shifting dollars accordingly to keep up with that demand. Overall, Jane, if you want to slide into that next slide, we had over 13,000 library materials borrowed this last quarter. It's pretty average. It just felt that March was significantly higher than some of the other ones that we've seen. 82 new patrons, and then we had almost 2,000 people who attended library programs. So those are inside our library and outside of our library. Like, we had Kids Fest, or not Kids Fest, but like literacy night, so that was a big, had a lot of exposure there. We had a magic show, a lot of people attend for that. So just a lot of people coming in during the winter months especially, meetings, looking for something, free activities in the community. About 3100 digital items checked out, and we were able to add 460 new materials, which is about average, just a little low. Again, shift because unfortunately, the cost of digital services is about triple what a printed book runs. So we have to keep that in mind and use our dollars wisely. And then we had about 2,000 visits on our library website, so that continues to be active. And we can, we saw like in January when we had a lot of people sign up, and we did transition too, over the last quarter to signing things up online. So instead of people contacting us through the library and, you know, doing paper signups, we're now routing them to our website. It's part of a free program that the state library offers us, and we're utilizing that now. So it's always good to get them to our website. Technology wise, we had 34 hotspots checked out. It's a little bit lower again than you'll see in the summer months, just again, timing, vacation, but they don't sit around very long. Well, I think there was one week that I actually saw one in that I can remember, and I was shocked. So usually, they cycle through pretty quick. Like, about 1,000 computer sessions. We continue to see that grow. Right now, we have nine, trying to think. We just went down in a computer. So we have four computers for the kids, and we have six computers for the adults. So we have the capacity to go up to 12 at this point. And then our Wi-Fi continues to be used, so just over 6,000 connections on our Wi-Fi. Library outreach, let's see, we have 140 adult outreach participants in regards to Hanson House, Elm Crest, and Senior Center. Senior Center is having some staffing changes. I know the gal's retiring, so we'll see how, hopefully, that continues, if we can continue to go out there. And then our outreach for kids was 657, but again, about 400 of that was literacy nights. And then our homebound deliveries is down a little bit because we had a gal in the nursing home, but she's back home now amazingly enough, and so we were expecting that to go up. So, you know, that's, people are amazed at how much stuff we're able to do out in the community. And the homebound service is wonderful for our folks who can't make it into the library. Early literacy, so some of our, we have story time, and I kid you not, we had about 30 people at the last story time. And 20 of them were kids, 22 of them were kids. It was, I mean, it is awesome, but it's crazy because probably back in January, you know, we were having like six, and all of a sudden, you know, moms talk to moms, and we have new people come to the community, and we've got a full house out there. So then, family fun nights during this first quarter, we did a really fun aquarium type of activity where they could build, it looked like a real life aquarium, believe it or not, except it was not a real fish, and they got to build it and take it home with them. We, there's a company that we order books through, and he's also a magician. So we ordered books for him, through him, and he's a great bookseller, and he gets us exactly what we need, but he also provides one free magic program a year for us. So we utilized that, that's always nice. And then our after-school activities, where we do movies and various things that bring in the kids. And then I talked about literacy night. You know, at the library, we can't just do any, you know, we have to go all out. So the theme this time was book tasting, and I think we had four or five activities for the kids, not just one, you know. We had, we had a place where they could get their picture taken, so the photo booth, and then we had another place where they did their own graphic novels, and I can't remember all the thing, but it was about book tasting this year. Really good crowd, so that's one of the great things that we get to participate in. In regards to adulting, it's nice to offer free things for adults in our community. So for adult crafts, we have a snowman craft this last time, we had a yarn craft. We also, one of the months, we did a game night at the lounge. That was, that was amazing. We saw people that we'd never seen come to library programs, and that's the purpose, is to, I mean, to expose people to the library, it's not just in labor, we can go anywhere. So it was fun. And we did a lot of Saturday morning Scrabble, we did a make and take spa night, we had a program, an educational program on misbehaving women in Iowa. It's a historical program, so it was clean, but just lots of great, great adult things. And our patrons expect it too, they're like, what's the craft for next month? You know, and unfortunately, we can only offer about 15 to 20 spots. We could probably fill 30 to 40 spots depending on, you know, because it's just, there's no, it's just a free activity for somebody to do, where if you were paying for it, it would probably be a $30 to $40 night that you would go to. So it's, that's nice. Let's talk about project accomplishments, because on top of all of the checkouts we do, and on top of all the programs we do, we also have things that we're working on like in the back, behind the scenes. And so we updated, we got rid of our tablet table, because the tablets that were in there were retiring on their own, and we updated it, and so now we have two of these tablets that kids can just come up to the library and check out and take with them. It's a little bit removable, it takes up less room in the library, so we're able to use our space a little bit better. We did get the technology table, we talked about that a lot last week, people got to see that through the monogram of Kids Foundation, and it is just taking off like crazy. Kids I've never seen are using it, we have, and people with disabilities, it's really nice, because they get to come to the library, and it's something they've never done before. And then the person who's working with them can interact with them, so it's, it's a nice component to see in the library for a variety of ages. And then workspace in the back, you know, when I started at the library, we had like six people, so now I have 10, right? So where do you put all these people? And they're doing things, and we're growing, and so we have taken our backspace, and we waited about a year to get some old cover kitchen covers, so we can do this one wall. So we did that, not the ugly brown covers, but we don't care, it's just workable, nice space. And then just recently, we put in the white covers, and they're going to come back and clean up some of our cords and things like that on this next quarter, and provide, that would be a nice work surface for people to get stuff done. We also installed our new door counter, so I'm going to be able to track, I can literally see what times of day we have people come in. So we talked about that, Troy, with looking at patterns and seeing where people are at. And so now I'm probably able to do that, and it's pretty cool to see when, you know, like lunchtime, it actually, it dips. So there's definitely certain times of day where we're really busy, from like that 9 to 11 o'clock, and then it dips again, and we're busy again from like the 2 to 5 period. So it helps us with our staffing patterns and determine where we need people. We also updated, we replaced all the computers when I started in 2016 on the patron side, but we just finished updating them. So we had a grant, so we updated the last three, so now they've all been updated twice since 2016 on the patron side. And then we got a grant for $1,300 for collection development from the community chest, so that will go towards growing our graphic novel section and our adult and children's department. And then we finished the last wall in our children's area, put up an art wall for kids to show their stuff on, their art, and express themselves. Currently, we are onboarding our new adult services librarian, Lucy. She'll be taking Elizabeth's spot, and then Elizabeth will be taking Elaine's spot. We have crazy summer library program going on right now, we're getting all the final details wrapped up for that, lots of great stuff. One of the things that we're doing this year is we did our own shirts, so there's a live link out there on our Facebook page of three different variations of our summer shirt. It's Find Your Voice is the theme this year, and then on the back, it says The Harlan Community Library. So if you're interested in that, to look around and your library shirt this summer, that's available. I think they're $15, and then for every shirt that's purchased, $3 comes back to fund the summer library program. So we have that, which is kind of new. The book bike, we believe will be here towards the end of May, been collaborating with Dean and some other, and the sheriff's department and kind of supervisors to hopefully find a home for it to live that's really close to the library. And we have found a second architect firm to bid on our outside project, so we're excited about that. So we will have two to compare and perhaps move forward on that. So I know it's a lot going on, and it feels like a lot going on right now at the library, which is great. Any questions or comments that I can?
Sounds like you're bored.
Yeah, it's fun though. We have birthday coming up, it was rescheduled, so that's this Saturday as well. So if you have grandkids or kiddos looking for something to do, so far, looks like it might be decent, but we're crossing our fingers. Otherwise, we'll be at vets and we'll figure something out. So, so like that, guys.
Do you guys have any questions for Amanda?
Appreciate it. Thanks for having me.
Well, thanks for having me come in, let you know what's going on, I'll be back as usual, and at that point, we'll be talking about what's happened in summer, so.
There you go. Anything I hear, appreciate it.
Okay. Next up is review permit for fireworks displays from American Legion Post 150, J&amp;M displays for January 4, 2023.
July.
What did it say?
January.
Thank you.
You can do it twice a year.
I don't want to.
No, we're January, different New Year.
Yeah.
Anybody have any questions on that permit?
Motion.
Second? Motion by Lindberg and second by Shaven. Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Lind, or Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Almost skipped you. Authorized publication except public hearing date of May 16th, 2023 for fiscal year 22 and 23 budget amendment.
These are revenues and expenses that are either under or over what was budgeted here and a half ago. So anyway, I sent out some information for all of you, and I encourage you to look that over. This is setting the date for the 16th of May. If you have any questions, I welcome you to bring questions to me at any time or email. But this is the, this will set the date for the 16th, actually allow the public an opportunity to come in and have, ask questions or...
Do I have a motion to authorize that publication?
Motion.
Second?
Motion by Peterson, second by Beelenberg. Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you. And we're up to review airport manager contract. Have you had a chance to review all that?
I would just off to the comment, this has been in front of council, this essentially looks for concurrence each year, the airport commission does have the authority to, within their authority is to hire and manage the manager at the airport, yet we do look for concurrence each year. This was in front of the airport commission, our last monthly meeting, and this would be for final concurrents. Scott Pigsley continues to do an excellent job out there, not only with day-to-day management, but making it vibrant and growing as a regional airport or general aviation airport. So the same time for your concurrence, that the airport commission's already approved as well.
And this is for the next fiscal year, correct?
This will begin July 1. Would add, as you know, me never have lost for words, but Scott has grown in his role as the airport manager, he is also starting to offer other services that are more typical of what's called an FBO or fixed base operator. So for example, he has acquired an airplane for himself, he is providing flight lessons, he does provide, he'll rent, provide rental services, and those are, start to look like FBO or fixed base operator type services. With intent, just over three years ago, we split out to where we have an airport manager agreement, which Scott is fulfilling that, and something the airport commission is starting to evaluate and discuss is, may they, might they want to consider extending an FBO or fixed base operator agreement, which essentially says, here's who we would like to designate as providing the FBO services at this airport. Scott's doing it, could be one of many, but if that's, as he's growing his business, if they would like to extend that agreement, and essentially says you would have use of the, you know, be it a hangar space and/or the use of the terminal building for things such as sales of parts or advertising his business, et cetera. But that's to come, if that were to happen, but this is for the airport manager contract, and the, again, commission's already active on this. Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. Any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve the airport manager contract?
I'll make that motion to approve it.
Second?
Motion by Lindberg, second by Beelenberg. Roll call Rudolph?
Aye.
Shaven?
Aye.
Kroger?
Aye.
Beelenberg?
Aye.
Peterson?
Aye.
Lindberg?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so do we go to our guy first, or do we go to these guys first? Or where do you want to go?
Mayor Protem, I would just, I would offer, just being, with flex tonight a little bit, I do see that Cody Echols from the sheriff's office has joined us this evening, and thank you for being here, and if the council would like maybe an update, just to be respectful of time, as he's stopping through with, I know, other commitments, provide any updates on the sheriff, and then the one with Make My Move presentation, which will be, if you would like to.
Sounds great.
Works.
Very good, thanks for coming tonight.
Yeah, so I guess just a brief update. So we've been at this transition here for two weeks now, so far, and I'm glad things have gone smoothly. I don't think we've run into any issues for the most part. We have, you know, we had six, we were hiring six to fill the spots for the city, and then one spot for an opening we had. We currently have six hired. Four of them are currently working, we hired four of the Harlan officers, two are going to start on the 15th, and then we still have to hire for that seventh position yet. Some of the things I guess we've got going on, you'll see, is the old black and whites from Harlan, those are, I think today, we'll be finished getting the sheriff's stripes on them, so you'll see those running around. I think we got an update on, you know, our contract says 220 hours a week. First week, we had 261 hours, the second, no, 200, sorry, I just looked at it, and now I'm confused again. 244 hours the first week, 361 the second week. So I don't think getting those hours are going to be an issue, you know, we've obviously got the 24/7 coverage, but, you know, we've got more guys in town than just the, just your day and night part too, so. I'm trying to think of any other real updates.
Do you want to speak to your applicant, kind of the applicant flow?
Yeah, so we had quite a few applicants, I don't actually have an exact number for you, and I talked about earlier, we thought...
33 total applicants.
Okay, 33 applicants, we had a large number of certified applicants, so really, that's all we've interviewed so far, we haven't even gotten into the non-certified applicants yet. So yeah, we had a good turnout, I thought we had a good turnout for applicants. Yeah.
Demographic wise, are they like regional or state country?
Kind of, I mean, kind of all over, the first one's Arizona.
Yeah, we have a jumper coming from Phoenix Police Department that was originally a graduate from the Logan Magnolia area, and has joined the Air Force and was stationed out there, and has been a police officer for two years out there, and he's wanting to come back, so he's actually going to be purchasing a house in Harlan.
Yes, so he starts, he starts on the 15th, so the 15th, we're going to do what we're calling a mini academy, I guess, we're going to have all the new guys for, basically that week, we're going to try and knock out a bunch of training that week, so we can kind of streamline the FTO process and get them going out on the street on their own a little quicker, so hopefully that goes smoothly, that's the first time we've done that, but that's the first time we've had six guys starting at the same time, so.
How about K-9?
Oh yeah, so we do have Deputy Lee White, who was selected for the K-9 position, so he currently has Enzo, he has been doing some training with Deputy Pigsley. I think because Deputy Pigsley is our FTO, we're probably going to, when we can, or when it works for schedule wise and things like that, but we're going to get Deputy White down to, I think maybe down to Kyle Quist in the Atlantic area, who trains K-9s and K-9 handlers, just to get him his own training, get him through that, so we can get him back here and get him on the street sooner. So, but that, that process, I think, is going smoothly too. So, any other questions? I can't really think of anything right now, we're just day by day going through all the logistical stuff to, you know, all the things that we thought of and the things that we didn't think of, and, but I don't think we really run into anything, anything we weren't expecting, or anything that we have run into any big snags yet, so that's, that's good.
How about public feedback, anything there that's come in?
So I haven't, I guess, heard anything, positive or negative, I guess, yet, so I think, you know, it's a transition, it'll take some time, and, you know, little things like, I think we've had some people come to this door and it's locked, and, because Angie is now over there with us, so we don't actually have anybody in this building yet. We won't have an office person over here, but we will have, you know, deputy offices and things like that, but...
But this phone out here in the vestibule still works, correct, if we're like after hours?
I believe it does.
Yeah, it automatically kicks over to the comm center.
Yeah.
I think we tested the outside over here.
Top to top service.
I know that one for sure does.
Okay. Very good.
Yep. Everybody's happy.
Awesome.
That's the main thing, I mean, things are flowing, just to piggyback off Chief Echols, but things are flowing well, and attitudes are great, and people are happy, and productivity's up, keeping the jail busy.
And communication, from administration wise and staff wise, Sheriff and his team have been very responsive, open, I think we've worked, pickups come up, and we're collaboratively, and I guess they've done quite well. And at the end of the day, it's again about protecting the service, serving our citizens, Harlan and the greater Charlotte County area, and we'll continue to monitor this, we appreciate you for being here and updating.
Absolutely.
Very good, thank you so much.
Thanks.
You have a great night.
Thanks, chief.
Thank you, Sharon, for your reflection on that.
Yeah, of course, yep. Okay, so then we will go back to our Make My Move presentation. And I'm not sure who we have on the...
Ryan Pike.
Ryan Pike.
That's me, good evening, everybody, I appreciate your time, thanks for having me out here, or for not having me out there, but for just taking the time to kind of sit through the presentation. And I, I've got a couple of different things I really wanted to kind of go through and show you. First and foremost, I've got a presentation that I put together, I'll try to kind of list through that real quickly, because I can email it to Todd, and he can get it to you. There's a couple of highlights to the presentation, it focuses kind of solely on sort of a problem and opportunity, and then a solution essentially, and so I'll jump into that in a quick second. Where I think you'll sort of benefit the most, as this all pertains to, you know, communities trying to recruit people and talent to the community, is just sort of showing you the backend of our... backend of our website and kind of going through some of the benefits, just showing you what the applicant process looks like for a community that's actually smaller than yours, but is having great success being on the Make My Move platform. And then ultimately, I'll show you also what their platform page looks like on our website, and then essentially just take any questions that you may have. So with that said, again, my name's Ryan Pike. I'm the, one of the senior sales consultants here at Make My Move. And Todd and I got connected through one of our business development representatives. We've gone through, you know, the presentation a few times. So ultimately, if anybody has any questions while I'm presenting, I don't want anybody to lose a question by any means, so feel free to speak up. If you have a question, just let it out, and then obviously we'll get back to the presentation from there, if that makes sense. I'm going to go ahead and share the screen and just jump into the presentation here.
And you should have the ability to share. Excellent, Ryan. Looks like you already got her there.
Okay. Now, the question is, if I, so if I click on, are you able to see, does it show capturing the economic power of the remote workforce? Are you seeing that slide?
Yes.
Yes. Gene, are you seeing that remotely?
Yes, I see it as well.
Great, thank you.
Great. Awesome. Appreciate y'all confirming. So as we talk about the problem, essentially you've got the US population growth slowing down. You kind of can see sort of from somewhere between, you know, 1990 and 2000, there's just a steady decline in population in general. And everybody throughout the United States, even the world, is dealing with workforce, population growth type of issues. Those obviously aren't going away anytime soon. And so the old play of economic developers essentially targeting and selling to employers can be less effective when you have more jobs than you actually have people. And so, you know, as you look at some of the communities, well, I'm in Indianapolis, Indiana, so obviously, and obviously you're in Iowa, so we both got the low natural change, the low net migration of people, essentially. And so communities that Make My Move partners up with, they start thinking of recruiting people and talent as this new wave in economic development, and they essentially invest in it the same way that they would invest in attracting a business to the community. So the opportunity, where sort of this market came about, is remote workers. And if you think about pre-pandemic, we had five million of them overnight that turned into 80 million. And then last year, towards the end of Q3 or Q4, we were sitting right around 40 million. And so we know just from certain economists that we follow, Adam Mosin being one of them, that over 18 million of these remote workers are expected to move within the next three years. And so we consider these people to be geographical free agents. We did a poll our applicant pool just to kind of find out last year if this concept was here to stay, and we found that 58% of our applicants would seek employment elsewhere if the remote work benefits ended in their current jobs. And then as you dig deeper, you kind of see it's a little more prevalent with the younger generation, so 81% Gen Z, 67% millennial. And so, as I mentioned, you know, we consider these people to be geographical free agents. So we know they're recruitable. They chase affordability, space, community, and amenities. And we know half of them would move to a new city or town if they were given some sort of an incentive or if they were essentially recruited, per se. So we work with an economist out of Indiana University. His name is Drew Klesek. He put together a model for us to use that could show you the return on the investment. And this particular example is a real-life example of a software engineer that we moved from, working for Amazon.com. We moved him from San Francisco to Greensburg, Indiana. And Greensburg's not too far from Shelby County. It's a population of roughly 13,000. I think their median household income's 45,000 to 50,000. And I know from conversations with Todd, you guys are around 62,000 median household income, but, you know, almost 12,000 in population. And so when we moved this person from San Francisco, California, to Greensburg, Indiana, Drew's model essentially says the economic output for year one alone for this individual just moving, making 150,000, is 125,711 dollars. And that's comprised of three components. Taxes, which obviously right next to it, you can see the annual tax contribution for that would be 13,335. And then you have direct spending, which is somewhere around 70,000. And you have indirect spending, the multiplier effect. So, you know, the day this person moves, they become an incremental consumer spender and incremental taxpayer, and they are essentially a net new addition to the community. And as they spend their money, you know, these other places have the opportunity to grow because they weren't getting that person's money beforehand. So, you know, before they even move, they're probably working with a local real estate agent, who's also working with a local mortgage broker, a local homeowners insurance agent, and that'll probably get bundled with auto. Then they're going to bank locally. And so they're doing, they're spending money locally before they even moved to Greensburg, Indiana. So we took Drew's model and we plugged some numbers in for Shelby County. The model we ran with assumed that we just moved five individuals, five remote workers that actually are making 100,000 dollars apiece in income. And the reason we used 100,000 is just because in the state of Indiana, we've worked with about 28 communities to date, and we know that the average, the average remote worker brings rough, I think it was 102,000 was the actual number last year for people that we moved outside of the state of Indiana. And so if we just moved five people to Shelby County, the year-one economic output would be 263,143 dollars. Now, obviously, if we break that down to just one person, you're looking at 52,628 dollars. And then again, within that number, you've got direct spending, indirect spending, and the tax dollars. So the total tax dollars for those five individuals is 30,297. And obviously, if you break that down, it's just over 6,000 per person, obviously. So that's why we believe that these people are extremely valuable and, you know, you move five or 10 of them to the community, that's, from an economic output standpoint, it's almost as good as bringing a small business to the community. What this slide doesn't show you, and so what I just kind of want to convey that's really important, is that there are some significant side benefits to just the remote worker. I mean, that's, the remote worker is sort of the starting point, because that's the reason this phenomenon is happening right now. You know, for the first time in this person's life, they're not tethered to the city that they live in with their job. And a lot of these people are leaving coastal, amenity-rich communities, and they're moving back to the Midwest for a better cost of living, a lower cost of living, a safer environment, and the opportunity to get involved in their community, because they don't feel like they have those things where they currently live. And so we know just a couple of data points with the state of Indiana. 70% of the time, these people do actually bring a trailing spouse with them. 30% of the time, the trailing spouse enters the local workforce. And then 30% of the time, they bring in at least one school-aged child with them as well, which obviously, the more, you know, you add a kid to the school, and then that's an opportunity for, you know, Harlan or Shelby County in general to go get more state funding. So we really help local communities in more than one way. On top of that, you know, even though the remote worker is kind of the focal point, about 40% of our applicants are not technically remote. So for example, you know, there are nurses and doctors and teachers and all types of people that, you know, technically, like, they are a teacher, right? So they're not remote technically. I mean, they were during the pandemic, but they sort of view themselves as remote. They view themselves as an asset, because they could pick up and, you know, leave where they're at to find a better life, a better cost of living, and a safer environment. So that's just another side benefit, is that, you know, if you have industries and employers that, and everybody has industries and employers that just need people, the program that we offer has that side benefit, where 40% of those applicants, and they could even be Uber drivers and Lyft drivers, right? But at the end of the day, they're recruitable to your community, if that makes sense. So lastly, we get to just who we are, and essentially, Make My Move, we're an online marketplace that connects people shopping for a place to live with communities that want to actively recruit them. And our platform enables communities to articulate and market your unique stories. You have the ability to do that on our platform, whether it be through blogging, through videos, or photos from maybe the tourism department. We allow you to engage with a group of people that are, I mean, remote workers, but also their families, households in general, that are essentially ready to move today. And then lastly, we give you the tools and the expertise to actually facilitate the relocation of these new households. And so just to kind of finish up on the presentation, demand is high. We've had 1.3 billion unique visitors to the site, and we've got over 100,000 registered users and applicants. From kind of a case studies perspective, these are all communities that, some of them obviously are similar in size to Shelby County. If you look at Pop Wood Bluff in Mattoon, Illinois, they're 16,000, 17,000 in population. And they both have a hard incentive and they have soft incentives as well. The hard incentive is a relocation fee of 5,000 dollars. It's not required to be on our platform, but I always tell people about it, because some communities offer it and other communities don't. There's another one, Fonka City, that's 24,000. They don't offer a hard incentive, and they've had 169 applicants, with 46 of those applicants having a household income of greater than 75,000 dollars. And so, and then lastly, I just wanted to kind of just touch a little bit further on the trailing spouse testimony of Bloomington, Indiana, where Indiana University is located. Sort of the incentive, the only incentive they offer is a lifetime membership to a place called The Mill, which is essentially their coworking space. They sort of just, The Mill was already built, and so they just sort of came up with this lifetime membership. They valued it at 6,600 dollars. They've had some pretty good success with the program. But ultimately, what's really helped is that as these remote workers have moved to the city, they're now, you know, their spouses are now working at The Mill, you know, at the coworking space. And so it's been a huge benefit to them in more than one way. They've got remote workers there, they've got people that are employed there, and ideally, they've sort of killed two birds with one stone, if that makes sense. And so lastly, I'll just leave you with the Greensburg, Indiana case study. I kind of touched base on it beforehand. Again, similar in population, 13,000, with probably a median household income of like 45, 50,000. When we sat down with Greensburg, one of the things that they talked about for 20 minutes was their proximity to Indianapolis and Cincinnati. They sit kind of smack dab in the middle of those two cities on Interstate 74. What we did is we said, that's great if you're trying to get out of Greensburg, but we've got to bring people to Greensburg. And they decided, instead of being on the platform, they wanted to run a full-blown five mover campaign with us. So, you know, we got creative. One of the board members said, hey, if we're trying to bring all these young people to the community, we want them to get involved in the community. We'll be grandparents on demand. We'll provide babysitting services. Grandparents stay standing at school. And they had a nice welcoming soft incentive package on top of that. But ultimately, the program was pretty successful, I think, with just that marketing hook that we had kind of developed through the grandparents on demand. And we had almost 25 applications. You know, instead of five, we got them six committed movers, because we had somebody that didn't qualify for all the incentives, but said, I'm moving there anyways, just because this looks like a place I want to live in. And so overall, it was about 396,000 in new annual economic output for the community. And that kind of wraps up the presentation. I'm happy to kind of jump into the website and the backend. Figured I'd just, quick pause, see if anybody has any questions.
One of the keys to this is not only the economic impact, but begins, it's the remote workers, they're bringing somebody else's money to our community. We suffer from that right now. Our money leaves essentially in monogram and at times the hospital and goes to other communities. This is an opportunity for us to kind of turn that around a little bit, bring somebody else's money into our community.
Yeah, I mean, they bring their jobs with them, they bring another state's money with them, and from day one, or possibly even before day one, they become an incremental spender and an incremental consumer spender, incremental taxpayer within the community. So that's why it's nice. They are a net new addition to the community. I'm not going to read the whole article, but I was just going to click on this, and I think I kind of shared it with you, Todd, at one point. And I can email all this stuff to Todd, I'm sure he can get it to you, but the title kind of speaks for itself. You've got a 44-year-old who moved from California to Indiana, saves over 3,000 dollars a month, and thinks more people should consider living in the Midwest. And really just, at the end of the day, the article is just a good read, because the, you know, the remote worker highlights how when she lived in California, she didn't, she couldn't do anything she wanted to do. She couldn't go eat at the five-star restaurants. And now that she lives in Indiana, she can go back to California, save job, save income, just cost of living, she saves that much money, but she can go back and, you know, vacation there and do all the things she couldn't do when she lived there, because that's how much money she's saving, you know, annually, or, I'm sorry, monthly. So, and then just to kind of jump in, you know, the community I wanted to kind of show you guys is Lincoln County, Kansas, and for a couple of good reasons. For starters, it's, the population is 2,903 right now in Lincoln County. I mean, it is a small, small community. And so they ran a five mover campaign with us. And you can just kind of see some of the things that they offer. They've got their incentive package here, if you click on it. There's videos that you can watch that our marketing team put together. But ultimately, you know, this is their page on our platform. They've got like nine photos you can click on. It's had a bunch of likes and a bunch of different posts. And that's, there's not a whole lot to it. You've got some people that, you know, within the community, they'll get on there and they'll, this is like their own little blog, so they can share community events that are happening through our site, and then they can promote, you know, community videos that their marketing department has come up with. They can do those multiple different areas on the page, obviously. And if we go into, so that right there is a video, and I'm not going to play it, but I can email it for you. It's a couple of minutes long, but it's a really good one. If we go into their backend, and we look at what their mover status report looks like, so far to date, and there's certain people that we've moved out of the mix, you know, so this isn't an accurate number. I mean, we're sort of doing everything soup to nuts for them, from the stance of marketing and then pre-qualifying these people and putting them through fulfillment and all that, all those things. But so, but as we're looking at their page right now, they've got 85 movers found. And if I just, just knowing full well, your median household income was 62,000, if I just do a search and want to find out for Lincoln County, Kansas, how many people with a household income of 75,000 or greater have applied? Looks like 50,000. So earlier today, it was 48, so they probably had two more applicants since then. And so, and as you start looking at these people that are applying, you know, again, some of these people are remote, some of them are not, right? So you've got this freelancer, that's not really technically remote, but the person lives in Gilbertsville, Kentucky, making 76,000 dollars a year, just one adult, him by himself. This is obviously somebody that is looking to get out of Kentucky and is interested in moving to Lawrence, Kansas, probably, not Lawrence, Lincoln County, Kansas, probably just because of their package. And then as you're looking, you get to. And then as you're looking, you get to, you know, this gentleman is a cybersecurity analyst. So that is obviously a remote job. But, you know, you start looking at, some of these are remote, some of them are not. Here's a traveling merchandiser supervisor, an owner-operator, a business owner. You know, some of these people are not necessarily remote like the actual cybersecurity analysts. And then when we click into, you know, these people, so once they've actually applied, the community has all their contact information. So they've got the email address, the phone number, and then they've got, you know, physical address. Date of birth is optional. I mean, you know, we like keeping track of demographics because communities are interested in knowing the demographics that are applying. But it's certainly not a requirement. And then you can sort of see the activity from start to finish. They applied on May 1st, so yesterday, obviously. And then, you know, as they're, you know, we have tasks that we have to do since we're kind of doing everything soup to nuts for the community that are all kind of in here with check bars. But then when we get into the nitty-gritty of the application, you know, the process is pretty simple and straightforward. Every community has their own kind of stipulations. There's some basic ones. You got to be 18. You have to live outside of Lincoln County, Kansas. And then you have to be a U.S. citizen or legally allowed to work and live within the country. And then you also have to be able to move into a new city and bring your job with you. That's just for the actual, if you want to qualify to be a remote worker. The community can still recruit some of these people that are not remote workers and say, "Hey, you can come here and you can take advantage of three out of the five options on our soft incentive package if you want to move here and if you want to seek employment here." So again, there's remote workers that are recruitable. There's non-remote workers that are also recruitable because we can't really stop, you know, those non-remote workers from applying. And then this person just kind of highlights on a scale of one to five, they moved there tomorrow. What's most important to them is finding someplace with a lower cost of living. What concerns them the most? Building their personal network. And that's where, you know, the community that brings these people onboard, you know, not only do you bring them there, but then you kind of have a plan of action when they get there, obviously. And you get them involved with the community, maybe get them on a nonprofit board of directors or a very common soft incentive is a one-year membership to the Chamber of Commerce. And then obviously, they wanted to move, they want to move by the end of May, so they've got some pretty, some pretty quick goals, obviously. They have no prior connection to the region. And again, they said, it said one adult, but for the household income, there's 127,000 plus. Their personal income is 76,000. So maybe they just glossed over that and there's somebody else in the household, you know, with an additional income. Or maybe they've got, you know, another job and this is their income as the cybersecurity analyst, if that makes sense. You know, they do obviously confirm that their job is fully remote and they can continue working in a new location. And then obviously, lastly, and we see this a lot. I don't know if you guys see this a lot, but, you know, in Indiana, when you bring on 27 communities, it's pretty, it's pretty easy to get somebody to move just across the state line, especially if they're living in Chicago. Cost of living is pretty steep out there and safety is definitely a concern as of late. So this person flat-out said, "Hopefully, it's a lot more peaceful and slower-paced than Chicago is." And then last but not least, they heard about us through a friend. So that just kind of gives you a little bit of an example, you know, the types of people, obviously, that are applying. You can see the various incomes here, obviously, like this would be a good one. This person, Taylor Weinhofer, is in sales, but their income is 380,000. And within the household, they've got three, two adults and three children. So this is kind of another one that I would take a look at. Looks like they're the sole provider in their household. So maybe they have a trailing spouse that would like to enter the local workforce. You know, maybe one of their, you know, some of their kids are younger and, you know, she's still kind of in mom mood, per se. But this just gives you a little bit of an idea of the types of information and the types of data that we actually collect with respect to these people.
One of the other points here that's important is whether it's the spouse, because we have a couple of other instances of, that happen when people are looking at our community to move here. We may have our professional who's looking, you know, at a job at the hospital or they're looking at a job at one of our manufacturers. And the spouse will look around and say, "Well, what am I going to do when I move there?" So we can engage with these people to find out what that spouse does for a living, what their interest levels are, and actually almost be double recruiting them. You know, we could be recruiting that remote worker to come to our community while I give this lead to the hospital and say, "Here's a CNA that's looking for a job." Or I give a lead to one of our manufacturers and says, "Here's an administrative professional who's looking for a job." We can, we'll be able to know all of that about them because they're openly giving us that information.
So, I mean, is there a cost for these people to get onto the platform? Or exactly how does that work, I guess?
Yes, there is. There's a, so the community cost, just to be part of our platform, is typically $24,000 for the year. I had mentioned to Todd, obviously, if the community pre-pays, we knock that down to 20,000.
That's per year?
Yeah.
Yes, that would be for, for 365 days from whatever we kind of decide is sort of the start date. And I know, obviously, more often than not, you know, what we can do is we can, we can start collecting data, you know, from the community that we're working with and start getting, you know, we could get with tourism. And if there's, it sounds like there's a lot of photos and marketing videos. There's been money spent to kind of market the community. So we could start working on getting everything up on the site roughly a month, month and a half before, you know, the actual 365-day clock, if that makes sense. And that always gives the community time to go out and talk to people and get incentives. So, I mean, when I say that it's for the year, typically, when a community comes onboard, it's for like 13 and a half months if ultimately, you know, they decide to pull, you know, pull the trigger on it, if that makes sense. But, so there's kind of a lag period. If we move quickly out, there's a lag period where we could, we could have the community up and running for about a month and a half before the clock kicks in, if that makes sense.
So do the individuals who get on the platform, do they pay anything?
They don't.
They don't. It's all community expense.
That is correct, yes.
Yeah, it's just a new style of recruiting. You know, we've already gone through this past year and spent a lot of money producing some really nice videos we can use for it. We've already got other materials that we've produced previously that can also be a part of it. And then we can add to that by just, you know, really emphasizing the school system and emphasizing, again, our health services here. Because, you know, the things that people question, "If I move to a rural community, you know, what's the doctors like? What's the school like? Do I have a decent restaurant there?" And we can highlight all that.
Yeah, school systems, we get a lot of people that, it's always nice to have, you know, a group of individuals from sort of, you know, in terms of people that want to be part of the program or want to have access to the program. There does, I mean, there is a degree of administration that comes with this. And Todd and I have kind of already talked about that to a certain extent. But there could be, you know, every single one of you could have access to the backend, to the applicant pool, and could be checking this, could be looking at the applicant pool and sort of, you could all be using it, you know, to your own advantage, if that makes sense. So, you know, there's, we give visibility for the backend of this thing is never-ending, which I think makes it pretty cool. So it's, to a certain extent, I always just tell people it's community marketing on one end. And then on, you know, the flip side of that, it leads to economic output and it leads to, you know, people and individuals actually, you know, moving to the community. And it doesn't happen overnight, but as these people start applying, it's almost like, you know, sort of like if you're running a company and are applying to your company, like you need them for the job. And so the quicker that, you know, you show interest in them, the quicker the marriage between that applicant, you know, in the city of Harlan or Shelby County comes to fruition, if that makes sense.
And the other thing is it's trackable. You know, a lot of the stuff that we do, we can't specifically say because we said this on this day, that person was attracted or recruited. We're just putting image stuff out there trying to pull them in right now. This is very trackable. We'll know right away if it works or not. And it doesn't take months. We get two or three people to move here over 12 months, and we have like tripled our investment. Todd, do you know of any of the communities, any of these folks?
He is going to be a couple that I can talk to, yeah, and get some input from them.
So this is primarily for the chamber ownership or how, I guess?
No, this is the economic development side of our office. So this is, this is for whoever, you know, we want to get as many people involved. The community is going to have to do this together. It's going to be a commitment from the supervisors, from the city council, from our major employers to make this happen.
That was my question. Thank you.
But like I said, you know, two or three people move. And even some of the other things that Gina and I were talking about this morning, there's not many, very many communities our size that can say to somebody who's applying, "Oh, and by the way, if you want to build your own home, we got a lot for you for $1,000."
Very true.
Oh, we refer to talking, so other lots outside that specific area and other?
The guy who's making $350,000, he's not going to blink at a $25,000 lot in the Country Club of U.S. states. He's not going to blink at that.
And then speak to our fiber.
Yeah, and then the strength of our fiber backup.
Yeah, I think the strength of the fiber really makes you super attractive. I mean, at the end of the day, you know, these people, they are working remote, but they are, you know, if they're coming with a family, you know, they can't be at home, you know, all the time. And they are looking for, you know, places to, you know, whether it be, you know, a library or, you know, coffee or whatever. The fact, I mean, just the fact that you have fiber, the fact that they can work in their home or they can just go work anywhere within the community is huge. I think that makes you attractive and sellable for a lot of these remote workers.
And it's one of those things where we've got, you know, we've got an opportunity right now that our community has built over the last 10 to 15 years that others haven't. But they're going to catch up to us real soon when it comes to our fiber network and our fiber backup.
So this was presented to the supervisors?
This morning.
Your chamber board as well?
My chamber board initially.
Creating more exposure with, I don't know, you know, HME Board of Trustees. I mean, I think there's some other key stakeholders that need to have this conversation. Yeah, look to our school, look to our hospital, healthcare system, that, creating awareness and exposure to then say, "Okay, I want to move this forward" or is interested in moving this forward. And, you know, so often, at least on the governmental side, we can become so focused on, okay, here's what, you know, was it in terms of budgets and managing policy? And says, "This is an area we, I mean, Todd and his office, and we, this is a area we don't spend a lot of time in." So it's refreshing, not just this specifically, but just these ideas and concepts to say, "Okay, how can we grow? What are some new ideas?" So it's refreshing from at least my seat, my chair.
Okay, is there any questions for Ryan? He's an hour ahead of us. I think he wants to go have supper.
No, you're fine. I appreciate it. It's getting, it's getting dark here in Indianapolis, Indiana. I mean, it was a great day to begin with, and it has been for the last three or four. And I just, and then all of a sudden, I flipped the light on and I was like, "Okay, the light bulb doesn't work in my office." I'm trying to give you the best, a little bit of light on my face with my phone. But no, I appreciate the time from all of you. And if there are any questions, obviously, I'm happy to send the presentation and everything else to Todd. And you'll all, he's got my contact information, so anybody can feel free to reach back out to me if you have any individual questions, if you want to see similar, you know, more communities, you want to see the backend, see what the applicant process looks like. I mean, at the end of the day, I want all of you to feel comfortable with this. But we've had some really good success right now in the state of Indiana that's kind of, that's trailed off into Kentucky, Kansas, Illinois, Oklahoma. And so we're starting to have some pretty good conversations in Iowa and South Dakota. And it's just, it's a cool time, right? At the end of the day, if you think back, there's really only one good thing that came from the pandemic. It's the remote worker concept. And it's here to stay. It's not going away anytime soon. So, you know, we feel strongly that the communities that jump onboard and play offense are going to be the ones that benefit from these remote workers and bring them into the community and get them involved. So I appreciate the time this afternoon. Todd, thanks for setting everything up. And if there's any one-off questions, feel free to reach back out, but have a good rest and evening.
Thanks, Ryan. You too.
Thank you. Thanks, Ryan.
Some more to come then, I'm not?
More discussion to come. And again, the idea being, like I said, it's, it's not really something that we, you know, the chamber can just do on our own. And it's going to have to be something that we do as a community. Some of the, that little town of 2,500 people, I don't know if you noticed some of those incentives they had. Not only did they have the, "Hey, we'll help you out with babysitting. We'll be, you know, guest grandparents for you." But another part of that program was if you moved to that town, there were people who volunteered that you can just go over to our house and have supper.
I've seen that, like home-cooking meal in a neighbor's house.
Yeah. Really easy thing to do. We just get the community involved and get everybody onboard.
No, it's definitely, I mean, putting logistics together, I mean, it's a great program. So I'm assuming eventually this is something that will further on down to be like a shared cost between?
That's what I will be going around and asking for is, is I want many fingers in the financial side of this. So it's not a big hit to anybody, but we're all benefiting from it.
Yeah. Yeah. No, it makes sense, like you said, bringing people's, other companies' money into Shelby County and to Harlan.
We would easily spend, I mean, if we were doing it the old style, we would easily spend $20,000 to try to, you know, recruit a manufacturer to Harlan. By the time you think about the money we spend to find them, then the money we spend to incentivize them to come, where here, we get two or three people in and we've added a lot more to our community than we spent.
Well, Gina, she's a prime example of one, remote worker.
Yeah, she smiles.
Yep.
And you'll include businesses, I'm guessing, in that?
Yeah, no, because again, as what I've been seeing on this backend with them, this Make My Move is quietly growing. It was targeted at remote workers, but like you said, they're having more and more people just coming on saying, "Yeah, I want to move out of where I'm at to a place that's more comfortable." And you're telling me about, you know, I wouldn't have known about Harlan, Iowa, living in San Antonio, Texas, unless I came across you through this Make My Move program. And then we can start gearing, you know, again, our recruitment message that we have up there, like you said, we can do multiple messages. We can talk about, "These are the healthcare workers we need. These are the manufacturing workers we need. These are the industrial workers we need."
That was one of my questions, is she can put placement at which her, yeah?
And 20 grand goes by fast if you try it.
I spent 25 on just doing those two videos. And when they got, they got great exposure. And I'll kind of keep checking in with Randy and Kevin to see if we got more people looking for houses in Harlan. But that's about the only trackability I have on that.
Is this, and I guess made more of a question for Ryan. Obviously, Make My Move is probably a fairly newer company or they've been around for a little bit. So I'm anticipating as they grow in operation and we go into more states, that I'm assuming their services are probably going to?
Yeah, I think if we jump in now and take advantage of it early.
Yeah.
They would probably outgrow us.
Correct. Are they a unique company or are their companies similar to what they do?
I have not heard of anybody.
Yeah, that's kind of a new thing, I think. I mean, post-pandemic, I mean, he is correct, I mean, there is a lot of people that remote work and unfortunately in your line of work that doesn't quite work well, but.
I think it would be a drone.
There'll be a day of robots patrol.
But, no, I think it's, yeah, that's excellent information. If you have that though, could you forward that off? Would you be able to give that to Jean where he could give that out to city council, that presentation?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, yeah, okay, perfect.
No, that's a lot of good information. Like you said, one or two, two or three, I mean, you get your investment back right there in itself.
Exactly. And then the other positive thing would be is if, say, we've got a company that's got 50 remote workers out there and we get two or three sucked in here and they start talking to the people that they work with and say, ah, come check this place out. Because right now you're buried in Oakland, California. And the other, we didn't even talk about it during this presentation, but the other part of the thing that we would make sure is part of our, the way we present our community is you get to live this rural community lifestyle, you get to live this rural community cost of living, but you're only an hour away from some of the best concert venues around. You're only an hour and a half away from, you know, Des Moines. That's one of the, the last numbers I saw on Des Moines is they're projecting in the next 20 years, Des Moines will be over a million people. So that's just going to be more amenities that we could take advantage of, but we don't have the lids there.
And it was the Green Burger River, Indiana, that he was sharing, that is smack down in the middle between Cincinnati, no, Indianapolis and.
Indianapolis and.
There's an hour from each, yeah, very large population centers and yet they enjoy the more laid-back casual lifestyle and rural living, but access all the big.
Yeah.
Okay.
Appreciate it, Todd. No, thank you. It's a neat thing.
To Mr. Gene, should we go back to your report?
Most definitely.
Unless Todd wanted to keep going.
On the edge of your seat. A handful of things wanted to share. Last week was Administrative Professionals Week. This week, I want to celebrate our, is Professional Municipal Clerk Week across the nation, actually international, and celebrate the first week of May each year. So the city hall staff here, Jane and the entire team, the excellent work they do, excellent service and really want to celebrate them. So if you haven't already, recognize them this week and there's been a few others who have done the same. Also, next week, this is a, I know at times people get a little jaded, it seems like there's a week or a day for everything anymore, yet I think it's important that we do prop up and celebrate those that provide public service. And so next week is Public Service Recognition Week, so the entire city of Harlan team, full-time, part-time, volunteer part-time that make us tick and serve our community, U.S. elected officials to celebrate and recognize those folks. So I think it's important that through this public meeting that we extend the same recognition and appreciation. Some other updates and I'll finish with some other show and tell. Survey work down at the fourth and main structure that Snyder Engineering is providing for us, that survey work began a week and a half ago and out of that, once again, will be recommendations on cost of structures, replacement and estimated costs. So that work did get underway. May have noticed a four-foot-by-eight-foot sign out front of city hall here, that is with the USDA funding support towards our street improvement project. And during the duration of the project, that recognizes the contractor USDA as well as the engineering group. And that's one of the elements that is a requirement with that funding stream. So that is not a permanent structure, so that will be a temporary structure, let you know what's going on with that. Shared at last meeting and probably continue to do so at various times, that our Harlan Fire Department, again, where our numbers are adequate, but on the lower end. And I know they're still planning to do some volunteer recruitment activities, yet, you know, share it in this public meeting and for you to share with your networks that no one wants to provide public safety and get involved with a excellent department that talked to any one of you, I'm sure, as well as rectum city hall or chief beson for our volunteer fire squad. With the, some construction activity on the development, and this is brick and mortar stuff, so we go with things like Make My Move to where we're looking to recruit and have people relocate here. We do have some construction activity, not only because of the spring with, you know, a lot of people getting outdoors and doing their residential construction projects, yet there's development going on along the highway, which is exciting to see some development activity. And I know Todd has many questions and conversations that he's involved with and maybe some of you do as well. Yet with the Dollar General project, which is the target location, their Highway 59 and Cyclone, beginning their site work there, as well as with the new announcement with scooters along the highway. In the conversations I've had, mostly it's around excitement around it. And then I've also heard comments which, such as, well, I'm glad we're allowing people to come to the community now. And I'm sure Todd's office and certainly this office as well as you as an elected official would say, well, certainly we would welcome businesses and people to come to this community. And in these recent situations, the square peg fits the square hole, such as there's available land, zoning's already in place. So, and some of the additional comments have been, well, again, I'm glad we're allowing that. Well, it's not as though we don't allow those things. Sometimes there are more hurdles and/or steps to take either because of available land or zoning or infrastructure, yet it's not as though, and I bring these two examples specifically, it's not as though that, in this case, scooters came to city council and the city council blessed them to come to this community. So exciting times, nice to see development activity and then also refreshing to have conversations around things like Make My Move to, as to where we can go. One last item before a little bit of show and tell as I'll finish. There was an announcement yesterday from the governor's office and didn't have a chance to email this out to you, but you didn't have to go very far in the headlines of some of the news and news media, yet the legislature and at the state level seems very intent on getting some property tax reform passed this year. And this is it, last week at least, for Cyclone, for the legislators, yet there are times that they've extended into May and June that they've got ongoing activity. There was a 73-page amendment to House File 17 that got emailed out late yesterday afternoon. I personally haven't had a chance to read those 73 pages of amendment. Yet this article from the governor's office does celebrate that the Republicans from the House and Senate, as well as with the governor, have reached a deal. And from my public servant hat, I don't think making deals is the right term when we're looking at property tax reform and policy. That's my statement. I believe it's still too early as to know the actual outcome of this, there's a lot of uncertainty. This isn't something that next week we would feel, yet by next year's budget or five, five to seven years out, someone knows, the things that are impacted are the things such as recommending a consolidated levy, levy limitations based on assessment growth, caps on growth per parcel, so no more than 3% per parcel residential and 8% on commercial industrial. And then additional requirements on mailings to taxpayers are some of the detail buried, excuse me, included in this legislation. So that was the announcement, obviously would have to go in front of the entire House and Senate and then be signed by the governor. Yet the conversations I've been having is this seems more like politics than policy.
Well, I can tell you, the last quick update before I left the office. Passed, said 100% voted in favor, passed the House 94 to 1 in favor. It's on the way to the governor's desk right now.
Property tax reform can take many types and, yet, there's been plenty of offers of having more collaboration and study and understanding, yet the legislators from not only my lens, but talking to many others seem just very intent on making something happen quick. So a lot more to be learned, I anticipate, that through our league and that there'll be, once this passes, there's going to be hopefully a Cliff's Notebook and as well as some education sessions on all the changes impacted budgeting and levies and certification forms and limitations around that. So more to come on that. On a couple final notes of other things going on. A little bit of show and tell. Gina, poor Gina, you're still there, Gina?
Yeah, I'm still here.
Okay, how dare me not to share my screen. You know, I talk about show and tell and you're sitting there doing, you know, looking out at some nice sunshine and, but didn't want you not to. This is a tidbit of some things going on out at the airport. Doesn't this look like a really glitzy, sexy photo? This is on the final phases of the taxi lane project. They're doing final punch list items, so coming in and repairing just some surface cracks with epoxy. This is doing some final grading for drainage seating going on at the taxi lane project at the airport. Been by Bets Altorin lately, some of the facade work has started to happen. So that work is underway.
Are the west windows going to be closed in or are they, is that just temporary?
So there's a, on the west side, so both the west side and east side windows are being replaced, that's just the wrap as they get replaced. And then you might ask, well, gosh, what might it look like? So that's the rendering of what the completed product will look like.
Nice.
So that's the intent, I believe target is mid-June, maybe sooner, with the contract on this is in line in construction. So that's what was reviewed and approved with the Bets Commission.
Now, is the veterans memorial on, is that lit up behind that or is that just blue?
Not a daytime photo, but it will be lit.
Okay. Looks good.
And then you can see the little more welcoming with the awnings as well, all-new concrete across the front with the sidewalks.
Is that like flush with the lot? The sidewalk, is it flush?
Uh, no, there will be step, but also ADA on both sides. And then lastly, a couple of updates.
Where'd you go, Ryan?
So the no parking during school or from, during the afternoon and also when school's in session, the new ordinance which you all approved and went through the three readings, those signs got installed at the end of last week. And shared this with the school as well, so they can let their networks know. But just reminder to the public that on the east side of 19th from Willow to Durant is when to improve safety and access through that area during busy times, that that is in place. And then also while you're out and about, you may have seen, people have probably seen some of these things. A lot of long intersections in the right of way and these things being flags and paint markings. So here's a couple of examples. This relates to the significant street project work we're doing, again, with Willow, Durant, Baldwin, 9th Street. And this is marking out right of where he is because there's curb and gutter work as well as crosswalk work at intersections to make the media compliant. So if you're wondering what the profound number of flags and paint markings, it's again identifying all the services and utilities, preparing for the first phase, which is curb and gutter and the crosswalks. Once again, the mill of overlay, which is the pavement work, asphalt work is late June, early July. I think they started working on Willow yesterday with some of the curb and gutter and some point repair. And during that time, at least one lane of traffic is intended to be open at all times. So we know Durant, Baldwin and Willow are busy streets, yet just ask for the public to be mindful and aware that when that construction is going on with the curb and gutter and the crosswalks, there will be one lane of traffic open. Just be mindful and take your time and be aware of construction. I believe that's all I've got this evening.
Okay.
How about zinging together, welcome construction altogether? How about welcome signs? Is that still a sour subject yet?
Uh, no, expect you'll see some on that in the next meeting or two.
Okay, sorry, I didn't, you know, throw you a lot.
I was curious, I wondered what the welcome thing was coming, I was like, I'm sure you signed that together?
I've been on council all year. That was the first thing on my bucket.
Thanks, Gene.
Questions, comments?
Something going on. Didn't run HME out of flags.
Okay. Mr. Todd Valine, do you have anything else for chamber?
Nope, nope, that was my big.
Mr. Joe.
Save the best for last. Just a couple of things, mostly just related to the water project and a kind of reiteration of the, our board meeting last Thursday. We did get eight, one, we only got one bid on our water project and that's a good news, a million dollars over the engineer's estimate. So we actually had a conference call today with our bond attorney, our municipal advisor and so forth, trying to figure out, can we absorb that? Do we have to go back and rebid? And then we are having a meeting Thursday morning with our water committee members of the board to try to make a final decision, you know, how do we go forward? Do we try to absorb that through some cash on hand rates or there again, go back and try to rebid, you know? If we think we can get better numbers, at least get them to be a two or three contractors to bid on it, so we got something prepared to. So we should know something after that meeting Thursday with the water committee members.
Joe, on that, I know there's been section, components of that bid.
That section four was, decided electrical was really high.
Really glean anymore or learn anymore from your meeting today?
No, we are going to talk to the, to the electrical engineer that had worked on that too as a sub consultant for McClure P&amp;E and try to shed some more light on that too, just so we have enough information for the committee members Thursday to try to make an informed decision and then go to the board, full board, then at the next meeting decide what we do exactly. On that same note, I think I mentioned we had the Kiboy Pump Service was going to be in to try to do some more work on some existing wells, to try to get more production out of them. They worked last week and a week before on eight wells, waiting for a final report, but there were a couple, we had several of those wells. I mean, we gained flow on all of them. Quite a few of them, we almost doubled production out of them too after they did the acidizing or air bursting on those wells. So trying to keep us out of, you know, water conservation this summer, but trying to keep that maintenance up on those existing wells too, just to keep our production up. And then lastly, just kind of piggybacking on what Gina talked about with Dollar General and scooters, you know, we've been in contact with both the owner, engineer and contractors on both those projects, just to make sure we've got our. on both those projects, just to making sure we've got our materials in place, ready to go, when they're ready for us to put the services in, gas, electric, and water. So we're kind of keeping close track of that. Move in as soon as they get, you know, like with Dollar General, as soon as they're at grade, we'll probably move in and start putting services in. Scooters, we actually got a date for their transformer in already, but kind of wait for demolition to kind of finish up their buildings down, concrete out of the way, and we'll kind of finish that up, set the transformer, and get our water service in there at that point, when they're ready. So any questions? All right. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Jordan.
Anybody have any other comments, public?
I was going to do a business plug, if you'll let me. More of the, people read the paper, the Monogram Loves Kids Foundation for drain applications, if you go to our monogramfoods.com, and if you click on what we value at the very top of the ribbon, you'll see our applications all online, but I think we're handing out $65,000 again this summer. And that's, money comes from our very generous vendors who will help fund it, and also we have a big gal in Memphis that helps fundraise through a silent auction, live auction event. So we get a lot of great partnerships with our vendors, really help support us and our community here. And just FYI, we have the same amount of money that goes to our Denison facility as well, so we can really hit our region here within 100 miles of each of our plants. So combined, we've got about $130,000 in grants we want to really hand out. So if you know anybody in the nonprofit, schools, cities, you know, some nonprofit-type application, really hit them up, and if they got questions, call or go on the website, and we'll try to answer. If you know connections, you know, entities, or people who put on events, something like that, that help support kids, that's what we want.
One of those applications due?
Great question. See if I can tell you.
Just had it.
The 23rd, not positive, but I think it's...
Like June?
May.
May? Just get it in before the end of May, how about that? It'd be okay. Let's just see here. What's the difference? Sorry, it's a different spot. I wasn't quite prepared for that one. Apologies.
Sorry. I just didn't know if anybody would be listening that would wonder.
I would have it in by the end of May. You got a month.
Yeah.
You'll be safe.
It does say Wednesday, May 31st.
Does it know what it says?
Wednesday, May 31st.
Mine just keeps flipping out on the website. So if you're nonprofit, great opportunity to get some funds. The grant application's not a hard application, and you just write as much or little as you want, but I'd write as much as you can to help explain what your entity does or what individuals do to support our youth in our communities. Great opportunity.
Yes. Thank you, Monogram. It is great.
Do I have anything else? Hey, I'm meeting adjourned.
Bye, Gina. Safe flight.